Okay, great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Uh, so, uh, the proposal that, uh, we're bringing forth today is actually, uh, a collaboration between Parking Services and DPW. As you said, it concerns the, uh, area of Glenville Road, uh, between Weaver Street and Riversville Road, uh, and, uh, it's, uh, it's more of a temporary plan, uh, that's, uh, gonna be, uh, started, uh, in, in, in advance of, uh, a much larger project that's, uh, in the works for, uh, that particular area town. And, uh, the, uh, proposal that we're bringing forth today includes, uh, some additional, uh, much-needed line striping, uh, in that area to delineate the, uh, travel portion of the roadway and, uh, the, uh, parking areas there. And also, to create two new parking spaces along the north side of Glenville Road, uh, right, uh, at the intersection with Pemberwick Road. And, uh, these new parking spaces will, uh, be defined so that, uh, we eliminate the, uh, the possibility of people parking ad hoc, if you will. And, uh, one of the, uh, safety concerns that we have with regards to that area is, uh, many times people park in such a manner that, uh, a portion of the vehicle, uh, extends out into the travel portion of the road. And as you'll see on the, uh, diagram there, uh, you know, we're dealing with the part of the roadway, uh, that encompasses a curve. So, uh, that increases the, uh, the safety, uh, concerns that, that we have. So, uh, what we're proposing, uh, in addition to the, uh, new line striping is, uh, the installation of two defined parking spaces, uh, in the area of the pizzeria that, uh, will, uh, clearly, uh, outline, uh, how people are to park and where they're to park. And these are gonna be, uh, thirty-minute-duration parking spaces.
So, a couple of years back, we received a grant from the Federal Highway Administration, one of our C-MAC grants. Um, our current plans, we've gone to initial public meetings on this. We're in the preliminary design stages. The current idea that we have is that there will probably be a traffic signal at the Pemberwick Road-Glenville intersection. By doing that, we would add a sidewalk, continue, you know, make a continuous sidewalk on the north side of the road there. And that, we would flip the parking, the two parking stalls that are there to the south side of the road. But then you would have the signalized intersection to be able to cross there, um, for the pizzeria. It's kind of a, it creates a sightline issue coming around that curve there with cars as you're coming from Weaver Street towards the Pemberwick Road. So, that's kind of the long-term, one of the biggest change at that corridor. This, um, project would entail both the Weaver Street intersection, the Riversville Road intersection, and the, um, where the, where Glenville Street makes the bend over there at, what's that called? Glenridge? Glenridge, yeah, the stop-and-shop there. So, all of those intersections are included in there. There's minor improvements at each one of those intersections with some of the radii, some of improving some of the, um, sidewalks in the area, et cetera. But, and then to answer your question about timing, we're currently in the preliminary design stage. Realistically, the design stage will probably take another year to complete with all the approvals that are necessary. And we may be able to be going out to bid on the project around this time next year or maybe a little bit, maybe even the following year. So, we're talking two to three years before the full, um, project could be implemented. Um, it's... It, yeah, it, it, it's a mixture of, it's a mixture of things. There's, um, the actual traffic volumes, when we've looked at them, the volume of traffic, in the morning, it's coming basically from Riversville towards town. In the afternoon, because I think you have people getting, um, going to the Merritt, you have people going to six-eighty-four that are utilizing this corridor. So, and, and, yeah, and the school. So, um, so there is traffic moving that direction. And then the afternoon, the higher volumes are going from Weaver Street towards Glen, or towards Riversville Street, Riversville Road. So, um... There will be some of that, correct. Um, as part of our plan, there's also going to be a couple parking stalls, um, where they currently exist down near the intersection by the bank at Riversville with the improved sidewalk when we make that switch over. That will help to, um, have people access that area. Traffic, for traffic safety purposes, having parking stalls in the middle of an intersection is not a safe location for parking. Um, and that's why we're trying to move them to a more safe location, by pulling them back on the other side of the street eventually. It will be, um, at the intersection, as part of our improvements, we're going to slightly move the intersection towards the south. So, there will be space between the wall and where the road is now, which doesn't exist where the sidewalk can be placed. Correct. We'll take a little bit of the green space off of that side and kind of add it to the other side. That's what we're gonna do. And that helps with the sight, because it helps us to not have to, that, that curve is kind of tighter there. And if we pull it over a little bit, we're able to make it a little bit lesser of a curve. Correct.
Uh, it's my understanding that there are some no-parking times in that area. I'll, I'll take that into consideration, please. Pemberwick Road. Uh, once it's enacted, it could be enforced by police department and local authorities.
Jim, you're here for the next two, right? Okay, so the next one... Oh, sorry. Okay, the next item, uh, is B, which is to establish and post speed limit for Meadow Drive and Cosco. Uh, this is a request by a resident, uh, who is concerned that there are many children who live on the street and feels vehicles are traveling too fast. Uh, Meadow Drive is a local roadway running east from Berg Street to Grove Street for a distance of point-one-five miles. There is currently no established speed limit. There are no sidewalks on Meadow Drive and no parking regulations. It was observed that neither Berg Street nor Grove Street have established speed limits. As Meadow Drive connects these two streets, establishing a speed limit for them as well would be reasonable and appropriate. It's recommended that a twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit be established and posted for Meadow Drive. Additionally, it's recommended that a twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit be established and posted for Berg Street and Grove Street.
Correct. So, um, this comes in, you know, through our DPW process and they, uh, this resident requested a speed limit. We did an investigation. We feel it's a residential neighborhood. Um, we typically will do a twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit on those roads, um, when appropriate. And this is one that we feel is appropriate.
Isn't there a town-wide speed limit?
There...
I mean, in other words, absent some variant?
Absent, um, that's a, um, you know, old wives' tale or whatever. There is no such thing as, in the state of Connecticut, there is no such thing as establishing a town-wide speed limit. So unless they've gone through a speed limit process that goes through both the Department of Public Works, then the town's legal traffic authority, once they're, once you approve it as the legal traffic authority, then it goes through the state's Office of State Traffic Administration. There isn't actually a speed limit on a road unless it's gone through that process. So, for instance...
You live and you learn, okay?
Yes, so there's many roads in town that do not have speed limits on them. Um, and it's, there's, you know, the police have explained to me, because I asked the same question at one time, um, if somebody's driving fifty mile-per-hour down a road and it's, um, they get in an accident or they hit something or whatever, they can't get a speeding ticket.
That's reckless driving.
They can get a reckless driving, they can be driving too fast for conditions, all these different...
But not speeding.
But not actually a speeding ticket, so...
So this is a statewide issue?
This is a statewide issue that every, um, there are a couple municipalities that a while back got that approved, but, um...
Canamere municipality do that?
We could, it, they no longer will allow that, um, to be done. They ask you to do them individually by roadway.
So you have to do it almost street-by-street?
Street-by-street, so...
What you're saying, unless that was grandfathered, that's ineffective.
Correct.
Just an intimidation, but not...
Could potentially be an intimidation factor as well.
Yeah. But are you, are you getting more and more of these? Because I keep hearing about these things throughout town. Are you seeing more and more people in neighborhoods raising the issue?
Honestly, we will generally see one probably once every couple months. Would be my guess that we get a request for a speed limit or, um, sometimes they've already, we've already established a speed limit on a road. So we will get requests for, um, other measures to slow down speeding.
That's what I was just gonna say, don't you get speed mums?
And so that's when we, speed mums, stop signs, et cetera. And we work through those and we work with the police department on enforcement issues. We can do, there's a variety of different things that we work together.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would just say, I'm not sure necessarily, but I don't know, obviously. But posting a speed limit is really gonna solve the problem that this gentleman, uh, says exists, which I don't doubt does exist. But, uh, posting a speed limit is interesting, but hardly a solution to the problem.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes it's just that gentle reminder to people that, uh, you know, to remember to travel lower speed or to take a look. We, we try to encourage people to remember that, um, when they're traveling through their local neighborhoods, they are traveling through the same neighborhood that they live in and that they should, even though they travel it all the time and are very familiar with it, they should still travel how they would want to be treated if they were standing out there in their own yard, somebody else drove by, so...
All valid points.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Motion was moved by Mr. Littback, seconded by Mr. Toner, all in favor? Aye. This requires the signature page, too?
Yes, Barbara has those.
Okay, we now need to jump, we're gonna jump. Okay, the next item, C, is to establish and post speed limit for Hearthstone Drive. Uh, this was, uh, concern presented by a resident on Hearthstone. Concern about the speed of traffic as there are many pedestrians in Riverside School and Eastern Middle School are nearby.
She's requesting a speed limit be established and posted. Uh, Hearthstone is a local roadway running south from Lockwood Road to Hendry Avenue for a distance of point-two-five miles. There is currently no established speed limit. There is a sidewalk on the west side of Hearthstone and parking is allowed on the street except for the east side from Hendry Avenue for a hundred-and-thirty-five feet between seven AM and nine AM, Monday through Friday, school days. Hearthstone is a walking route to Riverside Elementary School and Eastern Middle School. The surrounding neighborhood streets all have established and posted speed limits of twenty-five miles per hour except for Hearthstone and Druid. It is recommended that a twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit be established and posted for Hearthstone Drive and Druid Lane. Sounds like similar set of circumstances, and to Mr. Littback's point...
Similar set of circumstances, and the only thing I would point out here is, um, just, we do have a school zone and we do have this flashing school zone speed limits on, signs on both Hendry and Drinkwater, which is another initiative that we did along with the Board of Selectmen several years ago to put school zone speed limits, um, near all of our schools. So that's another added thing that we do when we can to help improve the safety of the residents. But this is just kind of one of those.
So moved.
Mr. Littback moved, Mr. Toner second, without objection. And all I will say is if there's, I don't know how many more streets who don't have speed limits, we're certainly, we're certainly gonna give purpose and workload to the next Board of Selectmen. So there'll be something for them to keep busy with.
There's plenty of roads.
Inch by inch, block by block.
Gotta get it covered, right?
Okay, um, we need to have a motion, uh, to take up an item that was not on our agenda. And the item is, um, related to the Old Greenwich Common Force Main project. And it's for a road closure and detour request. Okay, without objection. Um, this request is related to construction work necessary to complete the replacement of the twenty-four-inch diameter sanitary sewer force main that runs from exit four toward exit three, north of I-95 and south of the Metro North Railroad within the Connecticut DOT right-of-way and terminates at an underground sewer junction chamber at the intersection of Davis Avenue and Bruce Park Avenue. The force main receives flow from three out of four of our largest sewer pumping stations, namely Old Greenwich Pumping Station, Chapel Lane Pumping Station, and Cosco Pumping Station. This project is part of a consent decree that is administered by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection. The project has been significantly delayed for a year due to permit issues with the Connecticut DOT. The project is nearing completion, but requires installation of a temporary force main pipe that will be shallow, buried through Davis Avenue and then run behind a few properties off Bruce Park Avenue to discharge into a sanity, town sanitary sewer main in one of the private property's backyards. This temporary bypass pipe will be necessary to maintain sanitary sewer flow while the contractor installs the new pipe under Davis Avenue to its termination point at the intersection of Davis Avenue and Bruce Park Avenue. This work will require a combination of periods of work where we will be able to maintain alternating two-way traffic in one lane of roadway with Greenwich Police detail combined with periods of full road closure and detour. At this point, any road closure and detour are anticipated to be confined to the workdays of approximately seven AM to five PM and then temporary road plates utilized to reopen the road for overnight traffic. The anticipated duration of both alternating two-way traffic and road closures is anticipated to be approximately three months in duration. This schedule is dependent upon weather and any unforeseen conditions encountered. Future permanent road restoration will be completed in spring 2020 and would be addressed in a separate request to the Board of Selectmen. The attached identifies the proposed detour route as well as the proposed road signs. And I'm not going to, uh, read through all of that because it gets into this particulars, details. But, um, I think the purpose of the request is clear. And I entertain any questions to Jim, oh, Rich.
Rich Feminella, our superintendent of sewers or wastewater, wastewater treatment.
Thank you very much for hearing us this morning. So, yeah, thank you for reading that, Peter, from the August second memo to the board. Um, essentially, you know, in a nutshell, it's, we're nearing the end of the project. We need to install basically a temporary force main to maintain flow in that line because the new permanent force main needs to basically be installed in the same footprint as the existing one through Davis Avenue underneath the Metro North Railroad Bridge to its termination point at, at a junction chamber at the corner of Bruce Park Avenue and Davis Avenue. So we're gonna do the best we can to try to deal with, you know, more alternating two-way traffic, but there are gonna be periods of time where we are gonna have road closures during the day. And then the intent is to put down road plates and reopen the road overnight. Um, yes, sir?
I have a question. It, it's, it's germane to the project. So I, I wanna make sure I'm a hundred percent correct in this. So, my understanding is that the existing force main is on the north side of the Metro North Railroad tracks?
The, no. The, the existing force main is north of ninety-five and south of the Metro North Railroad tracks in the DOT right-of-way. And the existing force main then dives underneath, what's that word?
Mill Brook?
Brothers Brook.
Brother?
Um, comes up, scoots through kinda near the, uh, the horses and stuff over there by Bruce Park and then basically runs up, uh, Davis Avenue to that same termination point at Bruce Park Avenue. So what we did was, instead of going underneath the water, we have that area utility bridge. That's that, um, aluminum structure, which has the pipe across that they're working on. Um, and then continues down the right-of-way. And then it'll come out the, what's basically the DOT slash Metro North accessway. Um, and it'll turn, uh, right onto Davis Avenue and then continue to that same termination point that the existing one is.
So, so if you're, and thank you, I was gonna ask about that bridge, because I've been watching it as I come down the highway. Indian Field Road, as you get on exit four, you see, there's two lanes, like, along the side of the road where there's been equipment and... side of the road where there's been equipment and things. So the new force main is running down the south side of the railroad?
Yes.
That's what you said?
Yeah.
As well as the existing one?
Yes.
Because I also, correct me if I'm wrong, I was told that we were going to essentially keep both lines?
Correct. There, there's some, there's some interconnecting valves and the existing one is kept in service at least to the point where we're going to be replacing this piece underneath Davis Avenue, um, so that at least if there were, God forbid, an issue with the new one, while we wouldn't want to, you could necess, you could turn valves and, and if there was a break somewhere, I guess in the Cosco section, transmit flow through the existing one and get to the same place.
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
Why can't you start, and I say you, I don't mean you personally, uh, start in less than four weeks? Because the way you have it set up now, as I understand it, it's going to run right through the Christmas season, right into December.
The, the goal, well.
This has already been delayed, as you point out, a year due to Connecticut DOT. Can't we get this going so that at least by the beginning or middle of December, this is done?
So, the, the goal is to make the connection point sometime, hopefully, early December. But I, I just don't want to state that as a point of record because there's been a number of delaying factors to this project that have been extremely frustrating for all. I mean, material delay issues and, and construction issues have been a number of things. We are working with the contractor on trying to expedite and even do the best to see if there's concurrent activities that can occur to try to shrink that schedule. But it is a, is, to be honest, it is a challenging area to work. There's a, there's a good number of underground utilities that they have to encounter. The temporary bypass is, is one piece, but then to do the permanent installation, it involves putting in a, a larger diameter casing pipe underneath that bridge, um, removing the existing force main, putting in the new force main, um, you know, that there's certainly some, some nuances and, and difficulties there, but we are trying to limit that as much as possible because we, we're very sensitive to the fact that we're in close proximity to businesses and that is a, you know, congested area.
Yeah, I, I don't doubt for a moment the difficulty and, and all the other kinds of problems that you, A, have encountered and B, will encounter.
Yes.
I just would like to make sure that you are focused on trying to get this done and started. Four weeks you say till he starts and I don't know why that is.
Well, that was, um, that was based on the August second memo?
Ah.
Do you folks?
So he's ready to start now?
So, so the, the last I heard is they're supposed to start some test pits next week related to locating some of the utilities, which is the first step. And it depends, but they may start installing some or at least excavating for the installation of the temporary force main bypass the end of next week. So that is in play. We, we were originally trying to get on the August eighth agenda, so that was, that was why that was written that way. Yeah, no, 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 that's okay.
So I just want to make sure you're aware of, and you obviously are.
Yes, sir.
The importance of trying to get that done sooner.
Absolutely. Absolutely. No, we're very sensitive, because we worked there before, yes. Yes, sir.
Which way does the sewer main go? Does it go up Davis, uh, Bruce Park Avenue and then down, uh, Steamboat or does it go Museum Drive? Because.
So the, the force main.
Yeah.
Okay, discharges into a junction chamber that's kind of like, I guess it'd be like on the southeast corner of Bruce Park Avenue and Davis Avenue. And then eventually that ultimately winds up in a large gravity sewer that runs basically, um, down, um, Bruce Park Avenue and eventually down to the Grass Island Treme Plaza. It's gravity from that point on.
Great, thank you. Any questions from anybody here? Uh, if not, I entertain a motion to approve the road closure requests. With that objection.
Thank you very much.
Um, now we're going to go back to old business. I would just like to say, um, if we could take a two-minute, uh, break, I need to, uh, grab something that I admitted for my review, so we could take a two-minute recess.
Good morning. Uh, this is a resumption of the August twenty-second regular Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, under old business, uh, we have for the third meeting now, the municipal improvement request to approve the redevelopment agreement between the Town of Greenwich and Greenwich Plaza, Inc., pursuant to section ninety-nine A, two of the town charter. We've had, uh, extensive presentations over the last two meetings as well as responses to questions of the board of, which came to us. The one, uh, being answered at our last meeting, uh, with an opinion from Mr. Fox and that pertained to the, uh, question raised if the, uh, town had, had the right to publicly market the air rights to other potential third-party bidders. His conclusion was that we did, we do not believe the town is required to do so. That was a August seventh memorandum. We since received a August twentieth mender, memorandum, um, that raises or answers another question that was raised, um, at our meeting that we requested response. And that would be, uh, the follow-up to the first, would the town expose itself to litigation if we were to not, uh, put them out? And I believe, Mr. Fox, you're here, so you certainly can, uh, enumerate yourself, but the conclusion is we would not. But if you, if you could just touch on that, so that's, I just want to acknowledge those for the record because that follows on our last meeting. And then in addition, the other information that we received, which I believe we had said at our first meeting, is we wanted responses to the questions that were generated through the BET Budget Committee's, uh, meeting. And again, I just want to reiterate for the public record, just in terms of process, is that this particular subject matter was not required to go to the Board of Estimative Taxation because there is no appropriation involved. We elected to do so because we felt it's of significance, of importance to the town, one, and two, there are monetary, um, considerations at play. So that has resulted in that step. The ultimate authority on this in terms of approval will be the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting and, um, they too will be engaged. On Tuesday evening, we have scheduled a information session, I believe here in this room, Mr. Brangian, beginning at seven. And so that will again give opportunity for those who've not come to our meetings, the ability to ask questions, make comments and so forth. So that's really just to review the process, how we got to where we are today.
I agree with all you said. Follow-up question was raised at your last meeting as to whether or not we were exposing ourselves to litigation and whether we should therefore put this out to bid under our purchasing provisions. The answer to that is no. I don't think there's any requirement to do that, as I have explained in my memo yesterday. Secondly, as you folks well know, based on other discussions we have with you, we can't control litigation. We can't control who may sue us. And that could well happen. And if in fact that did occur, I would expect there would be some kind of an attempt to enjoin our, our, our action. Would that result in delay? Yes, uh, but I don't think that's the basis for not going forward.
Questions? So this board basically is doing two things. Correct me if I'm wrong, two things. One, we're referring in MI, which ties to the redevelopment proposal, which we've heard extensively about. And then accompanied to that is the agreement, which in its current form, we pass ultimately, and you could clarify me, ultimately RTM can amend it and change it and do what have you. And that then is the final agreement.
Yes, sir.
So we're just the initial step.
What do we, when we approve, when we look forward to the MI, what do, what do we say?
I believe what you are saying is that the development agreement has been submitted to you. You have reviewed it and you have made a determination that you approve it. You're sending it on to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review under section ninety-nine.
So we approve it means that we are certified, in quotes, uh, that we believe this is in the town's best interest, the way it is to go forward with this as construction, is that correct?
You are supporting it, yes, sir.
No.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to acknowledge, um, Mr. Brangian, if you have any other comments, you are very, uh, much, in central part of pulling together responses to some, I want to say it was forty-some odd questions, uh, which you received answers to. I know that it was a, I'd say exhaustive exercise, but when a thorough one, and I just want to acknowledge that. And certainly those questions have been disseminated to us, but I believe too, are they on the webpage related to the project, particularly for those who are from the press? Ken? I'm sorry, help me out, your first name?
RJ.
RJ, thanks, sorry, getting a little old. In case you haven't seen them, you can find them there. I mean, if there isn't any other comment, I'd entertain a motion.
Before you do, I have a question, if I may, probably. Ben, what, if anything, have we done to follow up on the one lawyer who wrote a letter saying he had a client who was interested? I, I know there's great doubts about the legitimacy of that, uh, or sorry, I understand there is, but without regard to that, have we followed up? Have we done anything or not?
We were, we were responsive to his request for, uh, documentation and he, he acknowledged receipt of everything and said, uh, he would be reading and he clearly made an indication that the ball's in his court, he'd be following up.
Thank you.
Again, is there a motion? So, Mr. Toner, you're making a motion? Is there a second?
Let me be, let me say something, Peter. Sure. I, I want to be clear on where I stand, which is very simply this. I like the project. I think it is on its face a good project, one clearly worthy of the town's consideration. Anything that will help improve that area, and this will, is a positive in my mind. I have no question about that. Having said that, my concern is one of process at this point and our going forward to approve that. So let me be specific as to what my concerns are. Specifically, while it is true that you've put together the answers that you received, uh, with, in response to the questions, there were a number of questions that of course were not answered. And I am totally understanding of the reason why a private corporation does not want to publish, as it were, a lot of their own financial information. Having said that, I'm also mindful that as a town official, it is our responsibility to be certain that the town is making the best deal that it can make. Part of that question, it seems to me, is the totality of the project, its economics on both sides of the equation. You know, we use the phrase, which is now so popular, about public-private partnership, but the fact that you're doing something with a private entity doesn't make it a partnership. We are not Ashworth's partners. That, that's just, I, I, with all due deference, that, that just doesn't wash. We're not sharing in their profits. Partners share in profits, partners share in losses, partners have a lot of legal liabilities. We have none of that. It is a situation in which we are selling some rights and the town is getting something back. My only question is, are we selling them at the right price? Are we getting what we should back in total? For me, and the reason I say it's a process question, is because as Peter said, while it may be true that the BET was not required and is not required, uh, to approve this, their expertise is valuable. And I for one would like to get the benefit of that expertise before I exercise my own judgment. I have looked at what's there. I will tell you right now, I am not dissatisfied with what's there, but I am also troubled by what's not there. And so what I'd like to hear is from the people that we elect that are our financial experts as to the importance of that data, if at all, maybe I'm mistaken, the relevance of it, maybe I'm mistaken, and how that all fits in. So to summarize very briefly, I am not opposed to the project. I am of a mind that says, let's just slow down, get the benefit of it and make sure we're doing the right thing. We have, if I do share responsibility, I think the steps that have been taken so far are all totally appropriate. Uh, I don't want anyone to mischaracterize my view on that. I do think there may be another bidder out there. I personally have substantial doubts about it, but I want to make sure that it's, it's vetted fully. So mine is a, a timing process issue. When we get the facts, I'll let the facts speak for themselves and make a judgment. But I want to say for now, I think we should not go forward, but rather should await.
Great, thank you. Did you want to comment? So you made the motion. I will second it and I will just say that I think we've given, from our board's point of view, considerable due diligence with the matter that's before us. We've engaged some of the best professionals in the area of expertise required. And I, I guess I make the distinction that the professionals that we've engaged, um, don't carry any potential, and this will be misconstrued when I say it, political biases. They're looking at it from a, a transactional point of view. And so having been the chairman of the BET for six years, serving on it for ten, I have regard for the BET, but I also believe I was elected by the citizens of the town to make my own judgment, for which I'm going to rely upon independent professionals to guide me and either trust or not trust what they tell me and know full well that others will have their own opinion. Our role is to decide whether to move forward. I respect your points very well. I just don't feel I'm going to benefit from what the BET has to say with all due respect to one of its members here today. I just, yeah. Yeah, sure.
You and I respect each other and that's fine. The only thing I will say is when you talk about professionals, we've hired professional lawyers. I don't know that we've hired a financial expert or experts to opine on this. If we had, if you told me Price Waterhouse had come in and done this, and I don't mean to select them, uh, I, I might have a different view. Or Goldman Sachs had looked at this and assessed it, I might have a different view. They, the BET, are our financial experts. Unless we're going outside, and we have not, I want to wait for that, but I fully understand your point of view.
Right, I don't know if, um, so the motion's been moved and seconded, we can take to a vote, but I just want to give those who are in attendance, since there was comments may, that may, uh, reflect upon any of those, the opportunity to say anything additional. Okay. Did you want to comment? So, all, all in favor of the motion to refer the amended agreement to the, uh, planning and zoning along with the redevelopment? Say aye. Oppose?
For the reasons stated, oppose.
Okay. So the matter carries to one. I believe that concludes, uh, the business before the board today. We have a meeting on September, Wednesday, September eleventh. Until then, I wish everybody all the best for the remaining days of the summer season and, uh, happy Labor Day and, um, yes. That's right. And back to school. Thank you for that.